Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for December 3, 2019. If we could call the roll.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Cantares?
Here.
Thank you. Item number two, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, there is just one small minor change to 4A2, which is currently on consent. And the first designation of the polling places that's there, number one, currently has Shakopee Junior High West. That has been changed and should now be Shakopee West Middle School. The address is the same, the school designation has changed. It has been changed several days ago on the official online version, and I just wanted to make you aware of it. The address again is correct, and it is now called the Shakopee West Middle School.
We will add that then to the 4A2. Anything else?
Nothing from staff, sir.
On the agenda, Councilor Whiting?
I approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consent business. There any changes here, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing other than 4A2, as I previously mentioned, sir.
4A2 noted. Do we have an updated resolution? More or less? Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Lehman. Before we vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for December 3 of 2019. 4A1 approves the minutes from the November 19, 2019 meeting. 4A2 adopts Resolution Number R201-TAC 132, which establishes polling places and absentee voting location for the City of Shakopee for the calendar year 2020. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number, excuse me, Number R2019-TAC 127, which accepts a grant award from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. 4C1 approves an ICE Arena rental agreement with Advantage Sports Group LLC. 4D1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC 128, which sets a public hearing date to consider the vacation of a public drainage and utility easements for property located north of 17th Avenue, east of Marystown Road, and west of Jackson Elementary School. 4E1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC 126, which requests MDOT to conduct a speed zone investigation on McKenna Road from Eagle Creek Boulevard to Tinto Cantu. And finally, 4E2 approves the order of a feasibility report for the 2020 full-depth pavement reconstruction project, which is CIF-TAC 20-TAC 004.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion on the table and a second for the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you all very much. Item number five, now I'd like to call on a resident to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record on an item not on the Seeing none, we will move ahead then to 7A, which is our 2020 Budget and Property Tax Levy Public Meeting and Presentation. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Councilor Lehman?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, public hearing is now open, or now open. Nate, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Nate Reinhardt, Finance Director for the City of Shakopee. Tonight, we have a public meeting on the 2020 Recommended Budget and Property Tax Levy. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide the public with information on the city's 2020 Proposed Budget and 2020 Proposed Property Tax Levy. It allows the general public a chance to comment on the proposed budget and property tax levy prior to its adoption. There were several steps the city staff and city council have taken to get us up to this point. The planning stages of the budget process begin in late spring, early summer. We did hold public input meetings to gain resident input early in the process. Staff presented the five-year capital improvement plan, commonly referred to as the CIP, at a work session in August, and presented the preliminary levy at a budget and work session in the beginning of September. On September 17, the city council set the preliminary property tax levy. The preliminary levy needs to be set by September 30 of each year. After that point, the levy cannot increase, it can only decrease. The property tax statements that would have been mailed here in the past few weeks was what reflects what was approved at that preliminary levy. The council then held a work session on November 19 to review the final proposed levy and budget, which is being presented here tonight. We have not changed the recommended city levy and preliminary levy from what was approved in September. The 2020 recommended levy for the city is $20,730,000, or 730,500, which is a $1,150,586 increase from the 2019 adopted levy. The Economic Development Authority levy, which is a levy based on a percentage of market value, will be held at $350,000 for 2020, which is no change from the previous year. Over the past three years, the city's estimated market value has increased by 1.2 billion to more than 6 billion. New construction accounts for 20% of this increase and has allowed the tax levy to be spread against, or spread across a larger tax base. Despite the proposed levy increase, as a result of the increase in market value, we're seeing our tax rate drop for the fourth straight year. The tax rate will decrease from 35.66 to 34.58, and these rates do include both the city and EDA tax rates. The 2020 budget accomplishes a couple of different things. The first one is maintaining our current levels of service for residents, and the second is aligning our actual investment with council priorities in both constructing and maintaining capital infrastructure. The budget allocates an additional $700,000 investment in streets, parks, and trails in accordance with the comp plan and Parks Master Plan. When you look at the levy impact of these two priorities, of the 5.86% levy increase, the majority, 3.6% of that levy increase is for increased capital infrastructure investment, and the remaining 2.5% is for general operations. So, the 2.5% operational increase is relatively modest in comparison with other cities. The city continues to see a very strong development through, throughout the city, and building permit revenues are coming in much higher than we had anticipated in our current year budget. For 2019, we're anticipating exceeding our budget amount by approximately 2.5 million. We often see that some of the large developments take two or three years to go through the full process from when we receive the building permit revenues. So what we've, we're proposing to do within this budget is to set aside a portion of these building permit revenues to fund future needs, which would be about 795,000. On this slide, I wanted to just highlight some of the additional efforts being made in connection with this budget process and future budget processes. First one, continue to work on diversification of revenues. Second one, establish basic level standard, basic service level standards. The third, incorporating long-term financial projections. And the last one, improving and prioritizing, improving prioritization, extending the timeframe of our capital improvement plans. We currently have a five-year CIP, and we're looking at it to extend that to a 15-year CIP. The 2020 budget is calculated using a 3% across-the-board increase for wages. However, we have not settled our union contracts yet for 2020. The impact of this 3% is approximately 510,000. Health insurance premiums have stabilized over the past couple of years. We had a 19% increase in 2018, 1% increase last year, and for 2020, we're seeing a 6.5% increase, which amounts to about 70,000. The 2018 legislature passed an amendment to the State of Minnesota's Police and Fire Pension Plan. Part of this legislation includes a mandatory employee and employer contribution increase. For the 2020 budget, this amounts to about 41,000. And then 2020 is a presidential election year, which will require the hiring of election judges. New in 2020, the city will now be required to host an absentee and early voting at City Hall, as opposed to it being held at the county government center, as in previous years. Then also, the 2020 election includes a presidential primary election, so instead of the typical two-election process, it's now a three-election process. We anticipate the budget impact of these would be around 45,000. The Parks Maintenance Division has been under increasing demands to keep up with the growing city and park maintenance standards. These demands have created need to add a Parks foreman and maintenance operator within the division. The addition of the foreman in the Parks Maintenance Division will then mirror the personnel structure within the Street Maintenance Division. The city added a maintenance operator in the Streets Division last year. Prior to that, the last addition to the Public Works Operational Staff occurred in 2014. The impact, including wages and benefits for this division, is 188,000. Rent chargers is our internal funding mechanism that we use to set aside funds for equipment on an annual basis, so that when a particular piece of equipment needs to be replaced, we have the funding available to replace that piece of equipment. Last year, staff recommended some changes with the equipment that had a useful life of 10 years or longer to start setting aside money at that future cost, as opposed to current replacement cost. We're transitioning to this over a four-year period, 2020 being the second year. That additional budget impact is 63,000 for 2020. And then we also completed a full review of inventory to ensure that we had all necessary equipment within the inventory being funded, which added a one-time budget impact of 343,000 Just to mention a couple of things on revenues. One area we increased was our building and permit revenue by about 29% or 415,000, just based on our actual revenues we're seeing the past couple of years. And then we have a decrease in cable franchise fee revenue. We're seeing about a 6% year-over-year decrease in what we're receiving for cable franchise fees. The EDA levy, it's identified on the property tax statements as a separate local tax outside the city's general property tax. Staff is recommending the EDA levy of 350,000 for 2020, which is the same amount as 2019 and 2018. However, the EDA has, does have levying authority under state statutes to levy a maximum amount of 902,000, which is based on a percentage of total taxable market value. This levy provides the funding for the economic and redevelopment activities within the city and separates it from the general fund. For the $350,000 EDA levy, the impact on the median value home is about $19. Later tonight, at the Economic Development Authority meeting, we'll ask for approval of that budget and property tax increase, or property tax amount, I shouldn't say an increase. This slide provides a further breakdown of the proposed 2020 levy. Levy amount does include a debt service levy of $2,187,900, which is a small change from last year, and then previously mentioned a $700,000 increase for capital improvements and park development. The next few slides, I wanted to kind of touch base on the impact of the property tax payer as a result of both a levy increase and the growth in market values. The city levy is a flat dollar amount of taxes, which is spread against all taxable properties in their proportion of total tax capacity of the city. Increases in market value led to a $1,025,000 or 9.8% growth in tax capacity for taxes payable in 2020. Of this amount, 346,000 is related to new construction. This compares to 6.8% and 8% growth in new construction in the previous two years. What this means for the city, at least for 2020, we could increase our levy by 1.77% without having a tax impact on existing properties. Scott County provides the staff with tax impact estimates for residential properties. Residential properties' values increased by an average of 6.7% from January 1, 2018 to January 1, 2019, which is what will be for payable 2020. The average market value home in Shakopee increased from 255,000 to 272,600. This chart provides the average change in valuation, so not the change in taxes, and the number of properties within that category. Obviously, certain properties, all properties are different, and they may be different than what's shown here for the typical property change. Here's the comparison of a hypothetical home at three different values. It takes in consideration the impact of the property tax levy and then the market value change. A home value last year at 174,300 would see a value this year of 188,800, which would result in a $38 annual property tax increase. A home valued last year at 255,000 would be valued this year at 272,600, so this is the median value home, which would see a $39 annual increase. And a home at 353,300 last year would increase to 369,500 or see a $24 annual increase. This chart shows the 10-year tax levy history of the city, so you can see the changes over that period. As a reminder, last year, we did have a levy decrease. The average levy change over this 10-year period is 3.38%.
Say that again?
Average change over the 10-year period on an annual basis, 3.38%. So the proposed tax levy will drop the city's tax rate from 35.66 to 34.57%, which is a decrease of a little over a percent. These rates do include the EDA levy. So here's the chart that compares the tax capacity and rate since 2006, including the 2020 proposed levy. As you can see from the chart, we've seen significant growth in tax capacity since 2013, which corresponds with a decrease in the tax rate. This slide shows the levy comparison with our comparable cities over the past two years. Blue bar represents the 2020 levy, and the orange bar is the 2019 levy. As you can see, the 2019 levy, the City of Shakopee was at the bottom with that negative 0.15%. And then despite the levy increase for 2020, we're comparing, when comparing the two years, we remain the lowest of the comparison cities, which is a good sign considering the additional investment we're making with capital infrastructure and parks this year with our levy.
I found this chart very compelling, obviously with our last year, but compared when it, you know, stack them like this, it's, I just found it really stood out. I did some homework on the League of Minnesota Cities website the other day, and it was talking about the, this is on preliminary tax levies, because they haven't all gone funnel yet, but the 2020 average in the state of Minnesota overall, of all cities, is 7.51%. And then I look at our comparable cities, and I think we're all doing pretty well, and Shakopee's numbers here in a stacked year-over-year really tell a compelling story.
Here's the overall comparison of what the average home would pay in terms of property taxes and utilities, specifically water, sewer, and storm. The median value home does vary slightly from the Scott County information, just based on the source of this information that I was able to get with the comparable cities. But as you can see, we fall into the lower half of the comparable cities when you're comparing what a average annual bill, I guess, would be for a property owner. This is the preliminary general fund summary budget that includes all the items discussed. Just going to mention that property taxes are the city's primary funding source, public safety being the city's largest expense, which is typical. And then this slide provides the departmental comparison, so it includes actions over the past two years and the budget request this year in comparison with the previous year. Just wanted to include that in here for reference. So the next steps, so this is a public meeting. Public is welcome to speak on the budget and/or property tax levy. After tonight's meeting, the budget and levy will come back to city council on December 17 for final approval. No action is required tonight by the city council, other than invite the public to speak.
Questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, the question I have is on page, it's the page with the, no. It was the page showing the revenue increase for the community center. There you go. Trying to break in a new finance guy right up early. You've got a negative sign in front of the increased revenue in the community center, ICE Arena and Community Center, and you've got a positive sign in a 25K for lost revenue. They should be switched. I look at a negative as a loss and a positive as a increase.
Actually, that's correct, Councilor Lehman, because what we're doing is we're talking about the impact upon the levy and the budget. So the loss of the cable franchise fees by 6% required us to add $25,000 into the budget to make up for that lost revenue, for example.
Okay. And did we lower the other budget by 40? With the negative sign in the ICE Arena Community Center?
No, sir. That's revenues that have been brought in, and actually, it's not SWCHS now, it's the contract that you just approved earlier today on consent.
Okay. So that's new revenue from rental?
That's new revenue.
Okay.
And there will be more new revenue coming in the future from the community center. Part of what we talked about in our future actions was diversification of revenue specifically targeting the parks and recreation, which has been an issue for council for the last at least three years.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? I have a question in regard to our debt. We're extinguishing some debt for, in 2020, is that correct?
I can't speak completely on that. What I can say is, for the debt service levy, when you look at comparisons of what's being paid for with property taxes at least, we're seeing a small increase in what we need for funding the 4,300. So we may have existing debt that we're paying off, I'm not familiar, but we may have some that we're paying off that's non-property tax related. I just can't answer that question.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, we, by action, this body canceled a couple of, two, I think it was, two debt issues, and basically, that means we're not going to roll the payments into this budget because there was enough excess in the debt fund.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? And you said the 10-year average of the City of Shakopee levy increase, I've never seen it termed that way, it was 3.38%?
Average increase.
Yeah, the average annual increase, of course, I can't find my note here, but I believe it's 3.8, but I was just going to double-check.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff?
I have one.
Councilor Bennett?
If we have a project that's on our CIP right now, and we feel that we don't want to proceed with it, and by the time between, let's say, this meeting and the next meeting, will that be taken off of the budget?
If that was council's direction, changes can be made up until you've approved the budget.
Okay, so that will, that will affect the budget and the overall tax levy. Okay. Just want to make sure I have.
If there are no further questions of staff, thank you very much, Nate. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and make comment on our budget and tax levy for 2020, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Councilor Lehman?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Brennan to close the public hearing. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Councilor Lehman?
Make a motion to go into recess to the EDA Economic Development Authority meeting.
I have a motion and a second to recess to the EDA. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We are in recess. Mr. President?
Thank you. Let's call it to order. The Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for December 3, 2019. Please make note of the roll. We're looking at item two, approval of the agenda. Member Cantares?
Motion to approve agenda.
A motion and a second by Councilor Lehman. Any other discussion, discussion, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. We have item number three, the consent business, is the EDA minutes. Member Mars?
Mr. President, I'd like to offer the EDA minutes for November 6th.
We have a motion and a seconded by Contreras for the consent business includes the EDA business. Any, any questions on the minutes? Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? In general business, we have item 5A, the EDA bill list. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, on the EDA bill list, check total number 144678. There's two listed with the same, well, they all have the same number, so I guess it's not a check total, it's a number. Kennedy and Graven, 2170 and 253, but they don't say what they're for. The other ones have a, have something by them telling us what they're for.
Well, if I were to assume, we've been doing a lot of projects with the projects downtown, but Mr. Kurski, you want to weigh in on some of those?
Mr. President and board members, I'm not sure, but typically if they're not coded, if they're for just general EDA business, so those don't get coded, they're just for the EDA overhead and operations. If they're for specific project, they get coded.
These are Kennedy and Graven?
Yep, those are for the attorneys, so we get, I don't know, 20 or 30 pages of bills from them and so every one of those is coded, so it either goes to a very specific project or it goes just to the general EDA overhead and operations. So if there's a project that comes through that doesn't happen, or if someone calls with a question that we have to get a referral from them, it can't be tied to a project because it didn't move forward, so it just goes in the general EDA fund.
I suppose the $2,100, 15 minutes worth of the lawyer's time.
He just spent it, I think.
You're full.
Yeah, all right, any, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the EDA bill list? Say aye.
Aye. You want a motion for that?
Do they have a motion for that already?
I don't think we do a motion.
You don't, you don't need to approve the bill list. However, Mr. President, 5B actually is an actionable item and that should be up in general business. You do need to take action on 5B tonight.
We will be calling 5B now, if all is, well, with the EDA bill list. Item 5D is the 20, is the 2020 EDA special benefit levy and budget. Mr. Reinhardt?
Good evening, President and members. I do not have a PowerPoint for this one, so it's not as extensive as the last one. But within that last PowerPoint, I did cover most of the information with the EDA. I just want to make a couple of comments. So the EDA levy is subject to the limit of 0.0185% of the city's estimated market value. The EDA levy cap for 2020 is 938,200. Prior to 2018, annual transfers were made from the city's general fund to the EDA to cover operational costs, loan funds, and other development-related activities. The EDA levy eliminates the need for this general fund transfer, thus reducing the city's general levy and it's considered a budget-neutral change amongst the two, between the city and the EDA. The advantage of the EDA levy is that the levy is applied to the market value of all taxable properties within the city, including properties that are currently part of tax abatement and TIF districts. The EDA levy is also identified on the property taxes separate, as a separate local tax outside the city's general property tax. Staff is recommending the EDA levy of 350,000 for 220, which is the same amount as 2019 and the same amount as 2018. For the home, medium value home at 272,000, they'd pay approximately $19 towards the EDA levy. Included in your packet tonight is the 2020 EDA budget. All the backup in detail to it.
Questions of staff? Questions on this one? Member Mars?
Mr. President, so, and we're, in regard to the EDA and we're backing off on our facade loan request, funds that go into that fund for this year, is that true?
We've included 30,000 this year. Is my understanding.
I think that's lower than it has been.
And that is a decrease, Mr. Mayor, members of council, excuse me, Mr. Mars and members of the EDA. And essentially that is because of need. We, we really haven't had the requests that we've had in the past and as opposed to just simply throwing the money into the fund, we decided to decrease it to a point where it's still workable, but based upon what we've done in the last few years.
And then, Mr. President, follow up, another continuation of the 25,000 that we helped fund the Main Street program. Obviously, big city event coming up on, on Friday night. That helps, helps pay for that and, and sponsorships, so that's great.
Questions, Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, roughly 200,000 is for wages. Biggest part of that budget goes toward wages, I guess, and is that two individuals or one?
I think it's 1.5 currently.
That's both part of Mr. Kurski's time and also our economic development special sign as well.
1.5 type deal?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Just to comment in clarification, you're new at this, so I won't hold your feet to the fire too hard, but this is your second presentation, so.
Yeah.
Push it up a level. But, so the, the same amount, we've levied the same amount for the EDA for several years. And in the past, what, two or three years, we've changed it from being part of the general fund to a special levy, so that it was more transparency, so taxpayers know where their funds go, is that correct?
That is my understanding and it, it specifically is saying that these funds are going to be used for economic development or housing redevelopment, those type of activities versus co-mandled with the general fund.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer Resolution E2019-021 and E2019-22, approving the 2020 EDA special benefit levy of $350,000 and the 2020 budget.
A motion and a second by Contreras. Any more discussion, discussion, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six. Mr. Lehman?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second by Ms. Brennan, Member Brennan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
December 17th.
December 17th, 2019, 7:00 PM. All right, thank you, all those in favor, say aye, we stand adjourned.
Aye.
I think we all said aye.
Aye.
All right, that one took a little longer than the last one, but.
We'll reconvene the city of Shakopee City Council meeting for December 3rd. And we completed our EDA work and we are on 10A1, request of administrative closure of an alleyway, Babe's Place, and Nate Burkett, are you going to present?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I didn't prepare a presentation, but I did prepare the memo. And after consultation with a bunch of, with all of the impacted departments, as you know, Babe's Place has asked to be able to close off a portion of the alleyway to the northern side of their building Friday nights for an event that they hold, kind of on an ad hoc basis. And fundamentally, the reason why the recommendation in the memo is that we should not allow this is because it's kind of hard to know where the line in the sand is drawn in the future. While the circumstances here are unique in that if the alleyway was closed for a period of time, the alleyway to a certain extent would still be passable, I have to ask the question about the, the bar owners and the people that own businesses going down the alleys in the other direction. However, understanding that this is kind of an interesting situation, I did put an option for a motion to be passed in the event that's the council's choice to allow for this. But ultimately, I think that it's a difficult type of situation because I think you can look at this and say it might work. For myself and I think for my colleagues as department heads and it's kind of one of those questions about where it, where it might end. So with that, I think, if you want to hear from the applicant or.
All further questions of staff? Further questions of staff? If not, thank you. Mary, would you like to come forward and make comment on your application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome.
My name is Mary Isaacson, I live at 703 Lewis Street in Shakopee. I am owner of a business downtown Babe's Place in Shakopee. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here again. I, I have had a conversation with Nate, he did call me up, that was, which was very appreciative, thank you very much for that, Nate. And his was, his reasoning is the future, if some other business wants to do this. You, you take them one business at a time. I mean, don't, don't paint everybody with the same paintbrush. It's, we're all different individuals. I still think this is a good thing for the city. I have numbers, I've started again, I had 167 last week. They're still coming down. They're still in town. They're still going to the other businesses. I, I've not had an issue, I, you know, know that if an issue ever does arise, I'm going to shut it down. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to put up with any bad behavior. I mean, I'll, I'll shut it down. But I think it would be a neat thing to try and, and see what happens. I'm the one that's taking all the risks. You know, it's my license. It's, it's my expense. It has no expense to the city. I'm the one that's on the hook. And so I'm going to babysit it and make sure it goes off right. You know, I, because it's important to me. And I think it's, it's a, again, a community thing where we want people to come down to Shakopee. And this is the way to get them down there. This is community. And that's how I feel this is. And again, at no expense to anybody else. You know, I'm taking it on. And I think to go forth and do good, it comes back at you. You know, I, I've been in here countless times, I, I can do what's required of me and, and make it simpler on everyone. You know, I, I have no problems with that. And if you choose to let us go forward with it, I'm not going to close the alley next Friday. I'm not going to, I'm, I have to wait until I know I have 350 people in my bar. You will have a week's notice before I close. But also keep in mind, I might only need the alley for two weeks and my drawing could go out. You know, that's sort of where, where I'm at. So it's not, I'm going to need it for eight months, but could I, yes. Or it's, okay, I just need it one more week and it went out. And then we just build it up again. So, thank you for your consideration, I know I've just been a pain.
So I did a couple of things the last couple of weeks since we've met. I, I watched the tape, the previous tape that when you spoke before us and you said 140 after the, after the big one was one, the first week was 140, now you're saying last week was 167, right?
Yes.
So, back in the day, I used to play a little bingo from time to time.
Yes.
And I thought there was a game that you'd go in and they'd play all these games, but the last one was a cover-all game.
Yes.
On a progressive pot. But they only drew so many numbers and if you didn't win, if nobody won, then the pot goes up a little bit, then you try to come back the next week. And I was thinking about that concept, that limiting the numbers that are drawn. Have you ever thought about trying to limit the number of tickets to your capacity at 350? It would create a higher demand and, and maybe patrons would come earlier.
Yes, I mean, but I'm also not going to, I don't know. What's the way to say it? I can't say no. You know, if, if someone's taken it to come down to the bar, I mean, it's my bar, and they're coming down and they get there and I'm going to say, I'm sorry, I'm full up. You know, that just creates animosity. Now, I, I've had people come in early. You know, when they, and they, they got there at, you know, noon. And they had friends and what they did is they sat there and they played cards. And they chatted and it was their way of getting out. No different than going to the community center, you know, I mean, it's just, so they made it, they made it an event for themselves. And so they came in on Fridays and like I said, played cards with, and talked and, and chatted and, you know, all this stuff. And so other people were doing that and so, I mean, they are coming earlier already. And so I don't, is that a possibility, yeah, but I, I couldn't do that. I mean, I'm all or nothing, I guess. And I would feel bad.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm looking at how much progress was made here. We've got, we went from any and all nights at your discretion to Friday nights from approximately 6:00 to 8:30. So now all we need is dates. You want to go four Fridays in a row or six?
See, that's where I can't, I, okay, in my head, man, and I know where you're going, you wanted a beginning date and you want an ending date.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
But this also is basically a game of chance. They don't pay for it, but it's a game of chance.
Oh, it's a game of chance on our side, too.
Yeah. But I'm saying that. If, if I say, okay, we can open up the alley for four weeks and get them used to, okay, they're going right to the alley and, and now after four weeks you pull it, okay, now you gotta try to get through and get to the other side.
Well, and, and here's where I'm coming from. When we approve the classic cars downtown, it's a date, it's a time, we know what it is, we can give advance notices. And if no cars show up, no cars show up. If it's raining, hailing, that's, that's what it is. It's a chance.
Yeah, but that's a car show.
Well, it's, they're using the streets and they're using the alleys or they're using public space. So I'm looking for the same thing to be consistent. I'm looking for, we've got a, a day and we've got a time, now we just need a date on a calendar. And if it's four weeks, how, how many weeks was the car show?
It was once a month.
Once a month for? For a period of months. So we knew in advance when it was, what the hours were. So I'm, I'm trying to be consistent and that's kind of what I'm looking for.
There was an alcohol involved in those, on an open street aspect of it. But Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, I, I thought about this, I don't really have a question about, for you, Mary, but here we've, I kind of look back at Rhythm on the Rails and that kind of excitement and it took bringing in bands and it took, you know, all this organization of food trucks and all these different things that went on and all the things that went into it to try and create excitement downtown and to celebrate the businesses and things. Well, here now, Mary has created an organic excitement through, I'll just say a game, a gimmick game, whatever you want to call it, but there's, this is not new. They've been Banco, there's been Bargo, there's been Meat Raffles, there's every other different thing and sometimes it's really exciting for a while, but then it fades out. Well, here, Mary's created some organic excitement and we've talked for years about trying to support our downtown. And now we're trying to box it in with dates, I think, I think we, here's an opportunity to be flexible, to create excitement, to create business downtown and I think it's worth a try.
I have a question for you, staff. I drove by twice in the last couple of days, your facility, and I've been. I drove by twice in the last couple days near your facility, and I've been in your facility in the past. Staff, you have a spot in the back, in between your little banquet hall kind of in the back, and that was a suggestion by staff. I looked at that and went, "Boy, that would have some holding power." Would that work for you?
The problem that I get with being back there, when I have that many people in the bar, it's hard to get back there. It's just hard to keep them moving back there, to get out there. And I think it would be, and this is why I've been trying to chase the alley, is when they come, they come in, they get their ticket, which is right by the door, but then they can go out there again without having to go through, you know, 100 people or 200 people to get into the back room. It was hard. I'm not gonna lie, it was very hard. And I'm on the microphone, and I'm like, "You gotta get outside. Go in the back, go in the back." And it was hard, because you don't move very good when there's a lot of people in there. And so, then they were going out the front door, and it's like, "Okay, well, you can't take that out there with you," you know, and you have to, you know, go stand out in the middle of the street. I mean, that's where they were ultimately standing, and I'm like, "You can't do that." It was very stressful. I couldn't lie. And so, I really do believe, and then I have my side door, they can go out that side door too. You know, there's multiple ways to get there without having to go through 200 or 300 people.
Counselor Brown?
So what you're saying is you're anticipating people would go out the front door and the side door? Is that what you're?
They can go out the front door to get to the alley.
So are you anticipating that that front sidewalk would need to be closed off?
No. Because they would, well, they'd go out the front door to walk down the sidewalk to get to the alley, not to stand in front of the, on the sidewalk.
So is your side door an emergency exit?
No, it's secondary.
I have four doors that are exits.
Okay.
It's not an emergency exit, it's an exit.
So if people, if there was an emergency in the building, people would need to use that door as a way to get out?
That door.
So would be, people be congregating around the doorway if they're standing in the alley?
No. There's a step. There's steps in the alley that go out the side door, just like I have front steps going into my building. All my doors are exit. They all push out. So there's, I technically have six doors in my establishment. Two of them are locked, I mean, because they're in the back in the office, and then I have another one that's back behind, where my cooler is on the main floor. But otherwise, I have four exits out of that building that are open.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
If we had a snow emergency, like, or a snow, a snow, you know, like we've had in the last few days?
Yes.
Where we've had to have plows come in and plowed out the area. The plows for the area, for the alleys, I think, are the last to go through.
Yes.
And if we are doing that, how would we coordinate the plowing for that alley?
Well, I've been, I've been down there for 20-some years. The plows don't go through at 6 o'clock at night, not downtown. They don't plow the streets downtown at that time of night, not that I've ever seen. They usually do them at night at 2 o'clock in the morning, 1 o'clock in the morning. That's to my knowledge, and maybe the Public Works Director would know more. But I have never seen a plow down there unless it's been 2 o'clock in the morning, and I've seen that. But I've never seen it at 5 o'clock at night.
Counselor Contras?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, quick question. From our previous concerns, we had the lighting. Have you thought about what you would do in that case, I mean, for that?
I, like I said, I can either get halogen lights, and I also know of someone that has, they're called light plants, and they come in on a trailer or something, and then they light up the skylight the Fourth of July, I guess. I don't, you know. I know they want it there at the front, so then people know that they're not coming, you know, not going in there. And I can get one in the back.
Thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm not opposed to closing the part of the street for events, whether it's National Night Out, or the car show, or the downtown festivals, or whatever. The thing for me is the organization of knowing when and what the timeline is. You know, one of the possibilities I was thinking about is closing off the area right in front of your business where the parking spots are there, and use that space right on the street. There's other parking lots they can park in. But I need set dates.
Right.
This date, this time to this time.
I think that, you know, look at an alternative in the back, or limit the tickets, and, you know, this is open-ended. I know you have a date here, and it's kind of April 3rd. You're not at capacity yet.
I don't have a date.
The authorization concludes on April 3rd, 2020, as I read the memo. And then it would have, you'd have to jump through some hoops to get it closed on a particular Friday. But to me, it's, that's what the memo says, and then it just seems like it's too open-ended. You won't need it this Friday. You won't need it in the middle of January when it's 20 below.
They're coming. I wish I could, I wish, honest to God, I wish I could say, "I'm gonna need to close this February 1st, you know, Friday, February 1st, because I know I'm gonna have 350." I don't. I'm not gonna close the alley if I don't have the people. I'm only going by, when I started this drawing back in January of 2019, I did not hit 100 people until May. It was five months, six months. When the drawing went out three weeks ago, the first night I had 140 people. I mean, I was blown away. I thought, "Oh, we're just gonna have our, you know, 40 people in there." And then the next week, it was 152. Last week was 167. I foresee this Friday being a little high, just because everyone's gonna be downtown too for the festival. I, but then I don't, I honestly don't know. And I'm not going to upset the apple cart and just close it willy-nilly, because I'm like, "I'm gonna start it now." It's not necessary. I'm only doing it when it's necessary. And I can give you an end date, because if I say, "Okay, I'm gonna end it, you know, March 31st," I can't, because it could've gone out February 1st. I'm not planning on closing the alley again until...
Back to square one.
Yeah. And it's just only when I hit that 350, because I can house them. I mean, they're, you know...
I watched the tape the other day again, and as I mentioned, and, Mary, you said the last time you were here that you're not asking for a special privilege. Is that, do you still feel that way?
No, I'm not asking for, you know, anything, to me, that's being outrageous. I'm not asking for, I'm asking for, you know, a quarter of the alley. An alley that they very seldom do drive down there on a Friday night, because the alley goes to the parking lot of the Pullman and the apartment people. Now, they all know that, and you know my point on parking downtown, which there isn't enough. They know there's no parking there. They're not even gonna drive by. They're not even gonna try. Because when they do, they come in, and they go into the parking lot, and they go right out the other exits. Very rarely do they go down the whole alley. I mean, I live it, you know? So, it's an alley, like I said, and it's a special alley. We're the only alley, I believe, in town that has all the entrance and exits. Any other alley does not. You go in one lane, you gotta go out the other way.
Counselor Whiting?
Well, here's a business, a successful business that's coming before us, that hasn't been required to do so because there's been a problem. So you're trying to come, other than being busy, you know? So it's not like you went ahead and did this, and the cops came in and shut her down. So she's trying to solve a great problem that she has, and coming to us before it gets out of hand or before there's an issue. So I appreciate that. I think there's always an opportunity to try something, and we can always revoke it at any time that we want. And so with that, to continue discussion, I would make a motion to approve for administrative closure of the alley between Home Street and Fuller Street between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:30 p.m. on Fridays. In order for administrative closure to be approved, the applicant must request closure by contacting the city clerk's office no later than noon on the day preceding the closure, provide for adequate lighting in the alley, ensure consumption of alcoholic beverages occurs only in designated areas through the use of wristbands, security, or some other general acceptable method, provide for waste disposal in the alley and in front of the business, clean up any refuse left following the closure no later than 7:00 a.m. the following day, pay any applicable fees to the City of Shakopee. This authorization concludes on April 3rd, 2020. The city administrator or designee is not required to approve administrative closure of the alley. And I will add that that could be revoked by the city council at any time.
Motion on the table?
Mary, if I may.
Second it first.
Oh, I'll second it. I will second it.
Okay, the motion's been seconded. Discussion?
Just to add, again, I do want the businesses to be successful, you know, in our downtown. That was one of my deals to support, and I want you to be successful in the business you're bringing. I appreciate. And again, just like Counselor Whiting said, everything must be done. The lighting, I ask for you, the lighting, very important. And at any time if we see things doing, like you said, I'm holding you to your word that you're not gonna take any of that chaos or, you know, getting out of hand. That's all. Thank you.
No, and you don't know me. You don't know how I run my business. You know, you really don't. I do reprimand them, you know, I do. And I also tell them, "If you're gonna wreck it, you wreck it for everyone that can hate you." You know, if you wanna, you wanna be that way, we're adults here. It's supposed to be a fun thing, and so don't bring in all the crap, you know, excuse me, but, you know, I just, I'm very adamant about that. I'm very hands-on. I'm very hands-on in my business. And so I, and I take pride in that. I take pride in what it looks like. I take pride in how we come off, and I take pride in it. And so, that's what you have when you have me.
Motion on the table in a second. Further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails two to three. I think there has been some progress, Mary, in the last month as we've discussed this, and I think you can continue to refine your plan.
Thank you.
Moving ahead then to 10B1, cost of 42 layout and cost participation.
Well, Mr. Lilyhog is getting ready.
Mr. Reynolds.
Mayor and members of council, I just kind of wanted to have a couple notes on this particular item. First of all, thank you very much to the county for working with us for several years, frankly, on this particular project. It wasn't really on our screen. It was a county-led project. The county wanted to do it. We had some initial concerns. The county worked with us on those concerns, specifically dealing with closures and routing of traffic through residential areas. We have those situations taken care of at this point. We still have some concerns. We have some concerns in regards to the cost allocations, but that's not what we're gonna be addressing tonight. This is essentially just the plan itself. So if you approve this particular plan, you're not saying that we agree with all the cost allocations. That still has to be worked out, and I'm confident that we can sit down with the county and make that happen. We do have some concern. There are multiple entities that are involved, the City of Prior Lake, the SMSC, the City of Shakopee, and obviously the county in this project. It touches all of us, 42 does in this particular stretch. From our perspective, we have some current concerns with the cost allocation, where the SMSC property is currently being cost allocated to the City of Shakopee. I think that we can work through those issues. We do not agree that that's the city's responsibility. However, that being said, like I said, we're gonna continue to work with the county on those. So essentially, Mr. Lilyhog is gonna talk about the plan as it stands now, and we will discuss the funding regarding it and whatever we work out with the county in the future. So with that being said, Mr. Lilyhog.
Steve?
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. I wanted to give a little project overview. I've been working on this project ever since I got here, and that's generally when the formality of the design and construction started about two and a half years ago. So I don't want to assume that I've passed on everything in the last two and a half years and that you're fully informed. I want to make sure I lay some of the keynotes out there tonight, and if you have any questions, let me know. And just to reiterate what Mr. Reynolds indicated, I'm not asking for a formal approval of any funding mechanism tonight. I'm generally asking for municipal consent of the layout. I'm not asking if you agree with the timing of the project, if it happens 10 years from now or two years ago. I'm asking, do you just generally approve with the project, how it's laid out, et cetera? And we'll talk about that a little more. So a little background on this, some of you may know more, way more about this than I do, but this project, expansion of County Road Highway 42, and on the map you'll see, the project is from County Highway 17 to County Highway 83. That County Road 17 interchange at 42 was built several years ago. It's kind of a rural, medium-speed type of interchange. Those projects don't just happen overnight, as some of you are well aware. The County Road 42 planning has been in the works for decades. There's been multiple corridor studies done for the entirety of County Road 42 from end to end of the county. And this is just one project of the many to bring that whole vision of a principal arterial to fruition. So, a little more recent here, the county has included this in their Transportation Improvement Plan for 2020. It's part of their comprehensive plan. And with that said, they did hire Kimley Horn and Associates to deliver this project, to put the plans together and the detailed plans together, and bidding, and get a contractor on board to build this project for 2020. Right now, they're at about 95% of planned production and completion. The city staff, since I've been here, several of us have participated throughout the couple years dating back to 2017 with the county's project management team. So there's been a lot of work that we have been working through, as Mr. Reynolds said, with access, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll touch on a few of those points. First, this is a project layout, and again, it extends from County Road 17 to County Road 83 and the Prior Lake. It's a... It's a county road. A connection on each end is county roads. In the middle, there's Dakota Parkway, which connects with the SMSC to the south. And beyond that, there's the existing use driveways, Minnesota Green in the northwest, and multiple farms and a few residences along the way as well. So, a few of the highlights of the plans. The expansion project would include a four-lane divided roadway with a combination of an urban design and a rural design. Urban being concrete curb and gutter, rural being ditches. Why the combination? One size doesn't fit all in this corridor, and it was a combination of rural and urban. Was used to lessen the impacts to the environment. There's substantial wetlands adjacent to the project. There is a good forest of trees adjacent to the project. So that combination was used to get a good balance in the project and to minimize environmental impacts. Ten-foot trails are proposed on both sides. As much as the design team could, the trail provides a little meandering of the trail rather than just a straight trail parallel to the roadway. Where possible, there's a little meander in the trail and to provide some, some interest in the trail to the trail users. There's stormwater facilities that are being proposed as part of this project. A special note would be, this is at the south end of Shakopee in this area. We don't, we do not expect to extend sanitary to County Road, I would say into County Road 42 or across. We expect to extend it to the property to the north of County Road 42. So both water and sanitary sewers. So we, we don't have any need for planning for sanitary water with this project in Shakopee. Along the corridor, there exists overhead utilities in accordance with city right-of-way that was adopted by city council. We do plan to have all the utilities located to underground, most notably a few of the overhead power lines. So they'd have to be relocated. We're requiring them to relocate it underground per city ordinance. We do plan to plant some trees along the trail outside of the roadway clear zone. So what that means is there are certain distance from the edge of the traveled lane that there should be, should be an obstacle-free clear zone for safety reasons. And that's a pretty wide area typically. And so there are some areas closer to the trail that is outside of this vehicle clear zone that we can accommodate some trees. We don't expect to see boulevard trees like you would in a more urban type of setting, like on some of the roads that you see here, like County Highway 17, 17th Avenue or County Road 16. We have a lot of boulevard trees there, but it's a lower speed roadway, a different flavor of a roadway. But we do plan to incorporate some aesthetic elements of landscaping and trees. And then with a special note of when this area to the north in Shakopee does develop, I expect it will someday, that with those developments at the nodes, we would expect there to be, you know, additional landscaping at some of the nodes and some landscaping incorporated with those future plans and developments. Another special note I'd make on this layout is, so right now, some property owners are living there and they don't plan on selling within the next year. So gotta maintain access to those properties in the future. Things will change. We expect access consolidation and a lot of those driveways to be removed. And, and the county will continue working with those adjacent property owners to, to relocate and combine access. I'll drill down on a, one of the most prominent would be, so this next slide shows on the northwest side, on the west end, this is where the Minnesota Green property is. Currently a commercial slash retail type of operation in there. They have mulch, et cetera, et cetera in there. So we've been working for two and a half years to get an agreement on what to do with their access. Back several years to the north of this area, the county came in as part of their County Road 17 project and access control on that adjacent project, the north-south County Road 17 highway. They, they actually, the county rebuilt a part of Wood Duck Avenue that we've been talking about up to our project that we rebuilt this year. And then they, and then they reconstructed Honstein, what is it, Circle? I can't remember the name of it. Honstein. It's a road. So, but that has, those roads, Honstein has a residential flavor to it. That's, that's the adjacent land uses to it. So on, on a city end, we don't expect to close the access for Minnesota Green and have the Minnesota Green trucks and commercial and whatever else they have going through that residential neighborhood. So we've been working with the county over the past few years and trying to maintain the access for Minnesota Green as long as that use exists on this property. So with the comprehensive planning, we looked at, looking, what's the appropriate use for this quadrant? And we determined that it would be, per the, per the comprehensive plan, it would be mostly residential at one level or another, but, but not commercial or retail. So we expect, as long as there's commercial retail on that quadrant, that existing use, that that access would be maintained off of County Road 42. And any portion of that, that would be broken off and developed as residential. Those residential elements would have access to the city neighborhood roadways to the north. All right. That was a lot just for one access, but for-
They're gonna, we're gonna maintain access until such a time that it turns residential. And the access would come from the north off, off that Honstein Avenue.
Yep. And that access as proposed, right, right now, you can, it's a full access. You can turn into it from any direction and leave in any direction. Proposed with this plan, it would be a right-in, right-out only on the Minnesota Green property. So that's what we have going with the Minnesota Green property. Yeah. So, I, I spoke about trails along the corridor. We, we do generally have trails planned along the entirety of the corridor. But there's an exception. On the south side, between County Road 17 and Dakota Parkway, that land is not current, currently, better to put it. We could install that trail now, but it connects to the, I'm gonna go back a slide. It connects to the, in this location, to nothing. So we see that it would be, working with the county, that it would be a better future project. The county also has a, an expansion project for County Road 17 in the future. When that project occurs, there would be trail installed as part of that project that would run north and south along County Road 17. At the next intersection to the south here, plus or minus, there would be an underpass that is planned for a trail. So until that underpass is built, this section of trail on the south side of County Road 42 really went sort of a purpose. So our, our team with the county is proposing to delay that portion of the trail until further date, which both the county and city would then participate in the construction of that trail, that segment of the trail. But beyond that, we do expect with the County Road 42 project, trails to be built on both sides of the road, 10 feet in width, and I'll have a little more discussion on the, the width of the trail. As part of the project, I indicated there'd be stormwater improvements on the north side. In Shakopee, we expect there to be two ponds. Here's the location of one stormwater pond. In this location here, it's the existing intersection at Dakota Parkway that goes into the, the Dakota property. Here's their public works facility. In the future, we, the city would be looking at extending our collector road, our north-south collector road that would, that would connect to this intersection. This would be our primary, one of our primary, one of two primary full-access intersections in the future. So it would be set up for that extension in the future as well. Moving another distance to-
Go back one?
Yep.
So, the, on the north side, we're retaining access over here on the west side of that map to that housing development? No, to the west?
So, so this is, with the County Road 42 project, this driveway right here, this would be the realigned driveway to this location. And then eventually, when and if that ever develops, this would be the location for a city street.
I was speaking to the one on the north side to the, there, you go, that one.
Okay. So this one would be maintained currently now too. It'd be, be turned into basically a right-in, right-out only. Yep. Sorry. East-west. I should know my directions, right?
Thank you.
So going east to the right more. There's one big red line right there, and that is a divider between the city limits, Shakopee and Prior Lake. So that is where the city limits end, a notable point. There's a second pond right here. And then there would be a future full-access intersection right here. One going to the SMSC property to the south. And then in the future, if this develops in Prior Lake and/or Shakopee, this would be where the, the second full-access intersection would be. Yes, it's in Prior Lake. We do have an understanding with Prior Lake that, that this is an invisible red line, meaning our east-west connector roads will connect into that road and have full access onto the county road at that point, if you follow me. So it would be a good interconnected neighborhoods to the north if they develop as residential. And then the, the last segment out of the four segments I just showed you is continuing to the east. That's all Prior Lake area. And then connect into the existing County Road 42 four-lane section. Yep, all right. Get my bearings here. Make sure I didn't forget it over. One more.
Question. Can you point out where the right-of-way acquisition is in this project?
So, this is the entirety of the corridor, the layout, the first one I started with. So right-of-way acquisition. It's on here. It just takes a little zooming in. But just in general, if we go in the, the four quadrants, the north half of this half and the south half, the south half was basically dedicated by the Sioux community as part, and I think at the time of when this County Road 17 interchange went in, they dedicated at 100%, they dedicated 100% it was needed on, on the south half. What's needed for the County Road 42 project now on the north side is being acquired by the county. It, it varies in dimensions. If, if you were to lay down and look at this alignment, east-west, you would see there's a little horizontal curve about at this intersection here where the roadway actually shifts a little to the north because of the, the SMSC public works facility. Gotta kind of preserve and tie into their property. So the roadway actually shifts a little north. So it requires a little more width on the Shakopee side from those property owners there. And a little more width, quite a bit width. And then, you know, generally continue to the, to the east of requiring more right-of-way on both the north and south sides.
Mayor, the reason I'm asking is when I'm looking at the right-of-way cost estimates in a city's percentage, is that based just on the actual land on the Shakopee side of 42?
Um, mayor and council members, that would be the easement costs. The answer's yes. Because there is no more, there is no cost any further of anything on the south side because it was already dedicated. So yes, that is for the easements and temporary easement, the permanent easements and temporary easements on the north side within Shakopee.
Okay.
Because everything else was already dedicated.
All right.
Yep. All right. And I wanted to make one more note to the east end in Prior Lake. Maybe I forgot this one. Here's the second pond I mentioned, which requires a big chunk drainage and utility easement off that property, making, you know, that's somewhat undevelopable, obviously. And then there's a, a third pond on the south side, and that would be on the SMSC property. All right. Now the fun stuff, all the numbers and cost participation. So with every project, and, and again, the city has experience with working with the county on many different projects in the past. Generally, I think you probably would give a head nod that the city's participated in generally most of those projects at one level or another. So what the county did, working in 2018 with all the communities of the county, is they developed a policy, a funding policy, a cost, a cost participation funding policy. So from project to project, community to community, township to township, there was a, a more general rule and percentages that they would be following. So it was consistent apples to apples from project to project. So they developed this cost participation policy and they adopted it. The, the county commissioners adopted it, I think it was in December of 2018. In, in our community in Shakopee, this would generally be the first project that we would be applying this cost participation percentages to. A little more on it, this cost participation policy is based on, if you look on the policy, and it's hard to see on the screen here, but I think you have a copy in front of you, there's three columns here. A collector road, a minor arterial road, and a principal arterial road. So there are three classifications of county roads that they generally use. The collector road is the lower level. It's not as much regional traffic on it. To the other extreme, the principal arterial, it's the highest level classification of roadways in the state. So the, the philosophy that the county used in proportion of cost participation to the cities would be, on the one end, if it's a principal arterial, the majority of that traffic is regional traffic. So the percentage of cost participation by the city is a lesser amount. And in this case, like for the roadway improvements, at 7.5%. To the other end of the spectrum, for a collector roadway, which you could look at it like almost 50% of that traffic is like Shakopee residents using that road. So there's a higher level of cost participation, and in this case, what they put in the policy was 45%. So that's generally the, the, the basis that the county used on developing their cost participation based on the functional classification of the roadway. So with that said, if you remember, a few of you, I think, were here where recently, in the past year and a half-ish, can't quite remember, the county requested a designation reclassification for County Highway 42 from a minor arterial to a principal arterial. That was a win, right? And we went from a 20% cost participation on this chart to 7.5%. So the county saved us money.
Funny how you describe that as a win. Thank you for that. I was involved in those discussions. Thank you.
So there was, you know, we had some baggage attached to that whole resolution of support for the conversion. And we just talked about that whole Minnesota Green property, and it was about that access. So we expect that to stay true to form, and our whole discussion on that access goes with this. And I thi, I think that's a good thing. What else do we wanna say here? I think I hit most of it. Yeah. And so the, the county, you know, with this designation change, they have stayed true to it with that, with that functional classification change to a principal arterial. They do plan on honoring this ratio of funding versus what it previously was classified as, so. So when we, when the county and their consultant did a cost estimation for the project, and if you look at the bottom here, it's about a $10 million project, $11 million project. At the numbers rate, look at that. I just keep looking at numbers. It just grew as I spoke here. It's $13 million now. Yep. You gotta look at the far rate. It's a $13.2 million project. It's a spendy one. If you look in the Shakopee column, based on, based on the county's assumptions, on their cost participation policy, if you go to the bottom of the Shakopee column, it's $1.1 million. So the breakdown of what the city would be, what county's asking the city to pay for would be $560,000 for the roadway improvements, $11,000 for the aesthetic parts, which are trees in this instance, $171,000 for our share of the trail, $231,000 for the easement and right-of-way purchasing, and then $156,000 for the engineering and administration of it, which amounts to $1.12 million. $1.129 million. So the good thing about this is in the CIP that was approved and is part of the, the budget that you'll be considering for approval, December 17th, 19th, one of those dates, our budget includes 1.4 million for this project. So we, we have been planning for it. It's in our CIP for the city's share of it. And it's coming under budget so far, as far as our budget goes. So that's another win, right? There's a couple discussion items though, and, and we'll talk about them a little more in length. And I'll focus on two items, is what should the city's responsibility be of that 7.5%? So just hold that thought. Is it 100% or 50% of that 7.5%? That's one thing I'm gonna dive into deeper here in a second. And then the proposed trail with eight foot versus 10 foot. with eight foot versus ten foot. So here we go, so cost participation policy. Um, on this map right here, this is basically circles the County Road for, forty-two corridor. Here, this dotted line running north-south, that's, uh, the Prior Lake, city of Shakopee, city limits. Um, on the north, there's yellow color, that's land use of, uh, suburban residential and et cetera. Um, on the south, SME property, it's fee and trust. So while indeed the Shakopee, my cursor's going all over here, the city boundary runs across and all of this property falls within the, the city of Shakopee, the s- the property on the south side of County Road forty-two is all in trust. Um, so we really have no jurisdictional authority over that land. So the question that we've asked is, uh, we don't get any tax benefit of that, that land being there, so should the city be responsible to pay for that half of the project? Right? So that's where I'm coming up with, well, if, if indeed this was entire, if this was all, um, land in city of Shakopee on the tax roll, then that would be a hundred percent of that seven point five percent of the roadway portion, if you're following me, um, versus, it's kinda like on our projects, if we have a project and we have parcels that, um, aren't on the tax rolls and we, we don't tax them, the city absorbs that cost for those parcels on our project, it's kinda end of story. We don't pass that cost on to the rest of the, um, adjacent properties, the city and our capital improvement fund, we absorb that cost. So similarly, we've, we've asked the county to consider the county absorbing that half of the cost that falls in Shakopee. And, and why? Um, kinda for those reasons. Um, it, it's just philosophical, should the city have to pay for that, or should the county? Um, i- it's, uh, it will be, uh, something that we have to talk through more on it. There's, uh, you know, pros and cons for, for every end of it, um, there's another, another reason why I feel that the city should only, and I recommend that the city should only potentially pay fifty percent of that seven and a half. Um, when the SMSC dedicated that property on the south, typically if that would have been purchased, the county would've had to pay for a big chunk of that, but it was donated. So, you know, that was a win for the county, they didn't have to pay anything for that, and then, and then the county would make the argument, well, neither did the city. So there's a lot of wins and win, wins, win-wins here for everybody. Um, so it's a discussion item that we want to continue working with the county, we don't have to make a decision tonight, because I'm not asking you to, to approve the funding ratio at this point. Uh, we've asked the county to consider, um, our suggestions, and we plan on reconvening and, and eventually we'll bring that whole funding discussion and official, um, approval back for your consideration, um, after they've had time to consider, um, a, a few of the things that we challenged the county with. Alright.
Is there, just back on that, the Shakopee, Minnewakan Sioux community is donating their portion of the right-of-way, so I get that the county doesn't have to purchase it, but it represents some value, right?
Um, Mayor, it does, and the, if you look in this, uh, the cost estimate, um, so it's always hard to assign a value on a donation, right? But the county did put a little placeholder in here, you know, so what was the value of the right-of-way that was dedicated? Half million dollars, it could be off by a half a million dollars, you know, there's a notable value in what, what the SMSC dedicated for right-of-way, no doubt about it. Is that fair?
No.
Alright. Um, so, uh, the next discussion I wanted to have was a eight-foot trail versus a ten-foot trail. Um, the first thing I'd like to say would be, is the general guideline and design standard currently is to build a ten-foot trail. Um, on, on Twelfth Avenue, if you recall, we, uh, were building a ten-foot trail, and there's a reason we're not building an eight-foot trail. Um, we had to have a ten-foot trail to qualify for the DNR grant that we got for it, they wanted to prove a grant with an eight-foot trail. It's, a ten-foot trail is today's recommended design standard width for a trail, in general.
It used to be narrower, now they want them a little bigger, and I, a bigger trail, there's a benefit to that.
And it, and it's about safety of the trail users, uh, you, you think about the trail, this trail along County Road forty-two, if you have, uh, if you have an avid bicycle rider versus, it's a shared trail, pedestrians and bicycle riders. Eight-foot trail with some cruising fifteen to twenty miles an hour on a bike, eight feet is not very much, right? So, uh, the recommended, uh, it doesn't mean you can't build eight-foot trails, it just says, the recommendation is ten-foot. So on the city's end, we, we from the get-go, we recommended and we, we requested ten-foot trails. Um, I don't know if it's longstanding or subsequently, um, the county has indicated that their policy, their policy is to only install ten-foot trails on regional trails, on designated regional trails. So in the county's regional trail map, um, they have designated regional trails. This, on County Road forty-two, it's not a designated regional trail, therefore it defaults to an eight-foot width. Uh, we're saying that, this is a, bear with me, this is a principal arterial, the highest roadway classification in the state. If there's any corridor that has a flavor of a regional trail, regardless, in my opinion, of where it's connecting, you know, is there a park on each end of regional significance? Not necessarily, but this is a regional trail, it has a flavor of a regional trail, it's not a trail where you get, um, your kids on and let them run to the park, this is a trail along a pretty busy highway, right? It has that regional significance, and I, I feel, and, uh, my recommendation is to continue with the ten-foot trail, understanding that the, that, uh, county's policy is what it is. Um, our implication is that it has a, a funding, uh, implication, if you will. Um, the county is saying, you know, it doesn't match our criteria, um, so the county will pay for their fifty percent share of an eight-foot trail, so that extra two feet, the city will have to pay for that. So rather than a fifty, fifty percent cost sharing on the trail, that additional two percent would be sixty percent city and forty percent city. Um, I, I would ask that the city don't get hung up on that, I would ask that we continue to work with the county, um, in, in the coming years to change their policy and support a little more flavor of what, uh, my recommendation is, is, uh, you know, I would, I would argue that every trail along our county road has, is regional, and, and should be designed at ten feet, and I'd challenge someone to kinda show me where that's not.
Councilmember.
Would it, uh, make sense to have the Shakopee side trail ten feet and the south side trail the county standard?
Um, Mayor and council members, um, I'm, I'm gonna recommend ten feet, you know, would, would it make sense to change trail widths? Well, we have that same discussion on the north side when we get into Prior Lake. Um, on the, on the south side, I, I indicated a little earlier that I think it's important that the city of Shakopee, when, when we do build that future trail, that the city does participate in, in that trail, you know, it, that is for our residents, and it will serve our residents, independent of, you know, our, my whole discussion about the fifty percent and a hundred percent of the roadway part of it.
Well, it's serving Prior Lake, Mystic, Mystic Lake, the tribe.
Agreed.
And maybe they should be participating in this, two feet on the south side.
Um, Mayor and council members, so that, you know, they, they'll participate in the, the trail in their city limits, it'd be, be hard to get them to participate in a trail in our city, but I get it, you know, users don't stop at the city line and turn around, I get it. Um, so they, the balance, you know, look at it this way maybe, is our residents use their trails too, so.
What's the cost difference between a eight and ten-foot?
Um, it was about, da-da-da-da, I figured it out, I wrote it down, somewhere, about sixty thousand dollars extra that the city would have to pay for, I think, if I computed it right.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, Mayor and members of council, Steve just generally wanted to give you a heads-up of the discussion points we're currently having with the county, uh, on these issues, and, and like, like we said earlier, we, we believe that we can work these issues out. Uh, we've been very, uh, uh, open with the county, and the county's been very open with us in these discussions in the last two years, and, uh, so, um, you know, this is just generally where we are now. Uh, you know, we have some work ahead of us, and we will, uh, once we get the funding streams worked out, we'll, we'll bring that all in front of you again.
Councilmember.
Um, we just recently approved our envision Shakopee. Um, so I was looking at it, um, and it says that currently we get about sixty-nine-hundred, um, people there daily.
Vehicles per day, right?
Yep.
Yep.
So, and, and it falls in the guidelines for a two-lane road with left, left turn lanes. And then I looked up the, what we expect for twenty-forty, um, and it says fifteen-thousand-eight-hundred in twenty-forty, and that still falls in the guidelines of a two-lane road with left-turn lanes. So what, twenty-forty is a number of years out, why are we, why is the county feeling that we need to complete this now? And are they anticipating something that we don't know? Um, and it's, it's a big chunk of money.
Um, Mayor and council members, um, I, I'm gonna give you, um, my opinion on it, and then I would maybe respectfully ask that you, um, are you still here? Yep. Ask Commissioner Beard to maybe comment on it, because I, I'm not here to represent the county, alright? So, but I would, I wanna give you my take on it. Um, the county has their corridor studies and their comprehensive plan and their transportation, um, investment program, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I, I'd, I would recommend to the city that, uh, we don't get in the business of dictating when they should or shouldn't do their project, you know, and I say that, and then it's like, well, they require us to participate cost-wise too. Right? So I, I understand all that, but I, I would, you know, maybe put a win on this here for us, right? Um, disagree or agree with the timing of it. I would say eventually this roadway will need to be a four-lane. Does it need to be a four-lane next year? No, there's, there's no one that's gonna tell you that it has to be a four-lane next year or by twenty-twenty-one. Um, I would say it will be, it will be needed in the future, it is supported by, uh, I think if we look in the comprehensive plan, eventually, I mean, when you get, start getting the fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand vehicles a day, you gotta start looking at a four-lane. Uh, this, this matches up with what the county's been planning for, this is the reason they designated as a principal arterial, east-west in the entirety of the county, in the entirety of the county, it's an extension of the four-lane to try to have that principal arterial as a, as an alternate to one-sixty-nine. Um, and it's an important corridor for the county. Um, I would say this would be in twenty-twenty, under the current plan, under the current's count, current timeline, under the county's current timeline, this will be the cheapest ever that the city of Shakopee can partner with the county and build this road, will never get a better deal on it. Um, so do we want to, we got a lot of other things going on at the county here, I, I would hate to start telling them when they should or shouldn't do this, this project, um, kind of as a side note, uh, you know, and, that's probably not a great sales pitch for you here.
Mr. Myers, I drove this stretch last Friday, and it's, it's not, it's in kinda tough shape, actually. It, it's, it's getting due for a fix. Um, I'm sure twenty years from now, we're gonna wish it was six lanes instead of four.
I hope not, I hope not, I don't think so.
Well, hindsight, look at one-sixty-nine, right? Um, and I, I think we have to recognize in the county's policy, um, the cost-sharing policy that the county has, that goes for all the cities within the county, and, and to, you know, we've gotta recognize that if we're asking the county to deviate from their policies for us, then wh- why wouldn't any other city or township expect the same? And pretty soon they no longer have a policy. Um, if the, if the issue is to, to have a discussion about a change to their policy countywide, well, that's not a bad conversation to have, but I don't think it should be one project here, one project there, I think it's a larger discussion, not just with the city of Shakopee, but all the cities and townships within Scott County, uh, and the county itself. Um, eight, ten-foot, doesn't sound like it's much of a cost difference, don't really care one way or the other. Um, and it's good to see some of these intersection improvements, they're long overdue.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I was one of the proponents of this policy, uh, when I first got here, uh, because as the administrators got together and started talking, we were like, well, what did you, you paid what? Why, why did we pay this? And then we come and, and, and then we were all scratching our heads, and, and, uh, the former county administrator got all of us together and said, well, let's look at this, and let's figure out what it should be. And, and from my perspective, as long as it was the same, uh, I was comfortable with it. Uh, and it took the guesswork out of it. Uh, you know, we real, we didn't have to barter, uh, for, 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 for each particular issue. The only thing I will say upon this particular, this stretch of road, like, is, is unique, and it's something that the policy didn't take into consideration. I mean, this is an area where we have trust land, and that's the only reason, uh, that, that, that I believe that, that we should even be talking about this. If it wasn't trust land, there wouldn't be a discussion on it. But this particular, uh, piece is unique in that it is trust land, and, and because of the reasons that Steve outlined, um, you know, us paying for both sides of it does, does cause a little bit of a rub. But again, you know, I, I'm confident that, uh, we'll figure it out, and I'm, I'm a proponent of the county policy. Uh, I, 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 I think I can speak for all the administrators when we said, you know, yes, let's do this and let's work it out, and the city of Shakopee had lots of input into that policy, and I appreciate the, the county's willingness to, to do that and to sit down with us and to, to listen to all of our concerns, and then put something together where, um, you know, if it wasn't for this particular roadway that appears to be out of the poli, outside of the realms of the policy, there would be no issues in regards to the cost. Uh, 'cause frankly, I, I support, uh, the, the, the knowing going into it, what it's ultimately gonna cost us.
And be perfectly clear, this cost participation agreement is new.
Yes.
It didn't, it didn't exist five years ago, ten years ago, it was all negotiating with the county and, um, and having some certainty to it, um, obviously helps each community come to terms with the equality of it, but there, yes, there is some uniqueness to it. Uh, Councilwoman.
No, I, I think you're right, it is a new policy, but, you know, this, this SMSC land is created an opportunity maybe to discuss it and create a, another layer to that, and, uh, hopefully the, we can get that worked out, so. Um, with that, I would make a motion to, uh...
There's no action.
No, no action, authorize this after prepare, it's right here.
Okay, Mr. Steve?
Um, I do have a couple more comments, I wanted to, I had, I just jotted down a few notes to get back to Council, Councilmember Brennan's point, a couple more sales pitch points, there are things that are really important. Um, not every county is proactive in their regional transportation improvements as Scott County is, and a matter of fact, uh, you'll go to some adjacent counties and they're more reactive than anything, so they don't build these corridors and improve to four-lanes until you have a traffic jam. So I'd say Scott County's done a really good job, I'm new to this county and working here, um, I've worked in counties where they're more reactive, that's not fun. Um, so I, really good job in being proactive, getting out in front, yeah, so when do we exactly need it, and when do we, when should it be done? Uh, but it, it's important, you know, the county's done a really good job on that point. I would say the forty-one interchange that is under construction right now on one-sixty-nine, um, that's being completed, uh, I think that's gonna spark more development around there, so it's good to get this infrastructure in place. And then one more point on the cost participation, and, and a comment on what, what I'm asking tonight. Um, but under the past, um, ratios that the city has negotiated with the county, um, what I've looked at on the past, um, percentages, is they would've been way higher, under the old system, whatever that was, but, um, this new system for this roadway at seven and a half percent for the roadway costs, um, it's a good deal for the city compared to past, so it's, it's a lesser amount than the city would've had to pay versus past projects that I've seen. And then, so what am I, what am I asking specifically tonight? Again, as Mr. Reynolds indicated, um, we're gonna bring a cost cooperative agreement back to you for approval that will allow, outline specifically on what we, what we were able to sit down and, and work out with the county, so nothing with the cost, um, I'm asking you just generally, um, so that typically we'd need a formal municipal consent on a project like this.
It's a formal process. The county said they don't need that, but I'm generally asking the layout of the roadway, four-lane, median, combination of urban, storm ponds, rural, all the above, that you just generally agree with this project. You may not agree with when it needs to be done or when the county has it programmed, but just in general, that you agree with municipal consent of this layout of the project. That's what I'm asking as a kind of a, as a concurrence with you and give me a head nod that you do agree with this. If you don't agree with it, then Mr. Reynolds and I probably are going to sit down with the county and not talk about cost participation. We're going to talk about whatever it is that you wouldn't agree with on this layout, so. So that's what we're asking for, you know, you giving us direction to proceed with a cooperative cost agreement. That's kind of that head nod with.
I generally agree with this plan. The rubble in the road that we, I've been hearing that can all be worked out, that would be great. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I generally agree with the concepts of what you've shown road design-wise. I'm okay with your proposal for the trails with the city picking up the difference. I think the cost is minimal. I do want to point out that I think the county has the same issue the city has. And yeah, we might have a unique situation because not many areas have tribal properties abutting. But the county has the exact same situation as the city does. They're not able to assess the tribal properties either. So that issue is really a federal issue in my mind, both the county and the city. Either one of us, county or city, could talk to them and see if they want to participate voluntarily because of the federal rules that apply. They don't have to participate. If they do, it's voluntary. And like I said, that's a federal issue, short of us asking. You made a comment earlier, when we can't assess properties, we take it out of the capital improvement fund so it doesn't affect other properties. I would point out that in our budget tonight, there's $700,000 levy just for the CIP. So that is affecting all properties. And almost a million dollars a year of franchise tax that we collect goes into the CIP. So, so we are in fact getting it from all properties and users.
All right. Anything else? And Commissioner Beard, from the county, would like to come forward and make comment. If you could stand in front of the podium, it'd be great.
I want to just stand right up there tonight, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Mike Beard, Scott County Commissioner for District Three, which is most of the city of Shakopee, residence is 8434 Horizon Drive. Thank you, Mr. Little Hog, for the outstanding presentation. And I'm here to encourage your, and you've already given the indication, that the layout and the schematic that's been worked out over the last two years is, I think, probably ninety-nine percent of the way there. We need that to keep moving. With the schedule that we're on, Councilor Brennan asked about why does it have to be done now? Well, nothing really has to be done now. But what you should know is it actually is a thoughtful, reasonable and well-considered plan for this county that reaches out almost twenty years. And this is one of the key parts of that plan. And when you look at the scheduling, the acquisition, the funding streams from both MNDOT, Met Council, and our sales tax for transportation dollars, if this doesn't happen this year, a couple of wheels are going to fall off of one side of the wagon, basically. We've got the 27 project in Prior Lake Credit River that's waiting for this one to move ahead. Behind this, in a couple of years, we have the continued expansion of County Road 17 to the south. From this intersection down, probably to 82 will be the next piece they're talking about at some point. On the map, you saw 17 is kind of like a half of a diamond interchange. Eventually, it'll be a full interchange, as will, I believe, the interchange at County Road 82 will also be grade separated because of the volumes of traffic we're anticipating in the growth of Shakopee, the growth south of here, and the continued prosperity and activity at the Midwakken and community. In the long term, probably within the next twenty years, highway designation of State Route 13 will be picked up and laid on County Road 17. So it's that County Road 13, or State Highway 13 then will come straight up from New Prague, probably to the bypass by Target on Marshall Road, and then go east, running concurrently with 169, and then down through Savage. Where, by the way, we also have in the plan two new interchanges, the most prominent, and one will be happening the soonest, will be right in front of the Old Continental Grain. We've actually got MNDOT involved. We have some funding set aside. And that was one of those that wasn't on our screen, as Bill mentioned, it popped up. And we seize the moment when it happens, and if we can squeeze that in, great. But if this doesn't happen this year, it probably won't happen for five or six. And we haven't put it in the overlay program. Councilor Lehman, you're right, it's a pretty rough road. And that's because we are planning on tearing it all up and rebuilding it next year. If we don't, we're going to have to find some bucks to lay asphalt for five or six years, smooth that out a bit. Thank you to your staff for working with our staff. I know it was a little testy when we started, but we've worked out a great bit of the detail. And I think we've got a very workable plan. When I first came here five years ago as the county commissioner, we were just coming off of the chaos, or in the middle of the chaos, on the existing 17 project. And I don't know which one of you councilors were here. Matt, Jay, you probably were. When we had a kind of a, everything was up for negotiation on who was going to pay for what. I remember the county actually got involved in a city street called Jennifer Lane because we knew it had to happen, and it wasn't happening, and so we helped that happen. I know at the time, part of the negotiations, because I heard it from Mr. Looney, repeatedly was the 10-ton specification for the Street of Wooddeck Trail down to Hoenstein Court. And, but you know what? Administrations change, and the plans that we all agreed to then, and the county spent the money to upgrade that street, now you don't want to use it for 10 tons? Okay, that's the way it works. In Prior Lake, we had a similar situation where 12 years ago, we shook hands on Arcadia and 21 and spent a million dollars getting that ready for traffic signals. We're tearing it all out of the ground now to put a roundabout in. We get that. The voters speak, new people show up, sometimes things change. But I guess what I want to applaud you on is thank you for your workability and thanks for working with our staff to get ninety-five percent of the way there, maybe ninety-nine. We'll work on the cost participation policy, and Mr. Reynolds is exactly right. It was pretty chaotic. Everything was sort of made up on the fly. But while we were working on some rationale for the primary arterial, and thank you for supporting that, by the way, because that took that not only from twenty percent your cost, eighty percent our cost, it also made it eligible for federal funding. And so the lion's share of this 11 million, thirteen million dollars that's coming is actually going to be federal dollars flowing through the TAB and through the Met Council. If this was a minor arterial, that wouldn't have happened. It would have been all on local property taxes or the sales tax to make that happen. Because you agreed with us on that, we can move a couple other little projects ahead, like the overpass down at Continental Grain, for instance. We can do that. A couple of other thoughts. The uniqueness of the participation of the tribe is, you're right, that's different. As we worked out a seven and a half percent for primary arterials like these, principal arterials, excuse me, to be precise, that makes sense, because like Mr. Little Hog said, that's part of a regional transportation system that runs from Chaska all the way to Hastings. And I was part of that original 42 study group back in 1995, when, that's when I first met Leslie Vermillion, when she was the Assistant Highway Engineer in Dakota County. And we were trying to, in Scott County, craft a plan so that our 42 didn't look like 42 in Burnsville. And I think it's working. So for those of us that kick against the access limitation, and I do, I holler about it just like the rest of you, and then the engineers just hold up the Dakota County picture and say, this is what we're trying to avoid, Commissioner. Then you have to kind of recognize, yes, there is wisdom to the plan. Making the, or having the local taxpayers participate at a much lower level makes a lot of sense. Seven and a half was negotiated number. It strikes us as reasonable. It's been about a year and a half since we put it into play. You're the first full project. The other project, 17 and a half, the bypass there, or the overpass, was built with SMSC money. I believe they paid almost 100% of that because they thought the need was so urgent. And at the time, they owned no property around that facility. When they built 83 from the bypass south to County Road 42, they paid over 90% of that project. I think the city's project cost in that was pretty much limited to the drainage way, underpass, which some can argue is undersized and they should have paid for anyhow. But nonetheless, a nice four-lane urban cross-section was built, and no, none of that was assessed to the city of Shakopee, and the taxpayers of Scott County paid very little on that also. The 83 project through the reservation itself, almost a 30-million-dollar project, the taxpayers of Scott County picked up 900,000 of that project. SMSC paid the rest. So I think you can make a case that they've been pretty reasonable to work with. And I think you'll find as we work this out, and you give staff time to room, they'll be reasonable here, too. The trail on the south side, don't be surprised if they might participate in a few years, whenever they figure out what they want to do with that property. One last thought about the regional trails. Yes, we build eight-foot trails and six-foot sidewalks. It's our policy. Policies can be discussed by people with election certificates, and we can change them if we want to do that. But you should know, this new 10-foot policy is pretty new. It's regional. We actually have a trail map that delineates our regional trails. And those ones, we don't assess for like we do the ones that aren't on the regional system because we solicit money from a state and federal fund that is run through the DNR and the Met Council to build those trails out. So just know that that's in the mix here, too. So we're talking about 10-foot trail. If it's a regional trail, it's probably going to be a little less cost per mile assessed to you than if it's, you're asking for regional trail specs on a portion of highway that's not set up in the regional trail system because we can't solicit state money for it. Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, I should say. Thank you for letting me sit and listen to the discussion tonight. Thank you for your participation in this. Know that we've got a lot more fun stuff coming up down the road. And it is an important timeline that we stay on because that sales tax that Matt helps us collect is only in effect for seven years, at the end of 2022. It expires. And we need a list of projects that that thing is funding. This is one of them, and we'd like to keep it right in the middle of the mix.
Thank you very much. And I know we're, looks like we're 90% there. Couple small, like I said, a couple rumble strips there, if we can straighten them out between the city and the county. I just want to thank you for your involvement. I think that we sat with a former county administrator and worked on this PA designation. And we worked at the city level on access and drainage, and then in combination with this cost participation agreement that Bill Reynolds worked on and other city administrators of the county. And again, when we were discussing the PA aspect of this, I know that the Shakopee-Wakonsu community was very active in those discussions as well. They had access concerns as well. So those are my comments. Yes.
Well, I don't want to cut up anymore. If any council members have any comments, the council member. Speaking of the city engineer, he mentioned that, you know, normally there's a formal cost participation, excuse me, a normal municipal consent approval process. The county hasn't asked for that here. If the council is prepared, it might be at least appropriate to adopt a motion approving the general layout for County Road 42 between County Road 17 and 83 and authorize staff to prepare a cooperative construction agreement for a future consideration by the council. That way, it'll be documented in the minutes, and both sides might have a little higher comfort level rather than just having a consensus of the council.
Yeah, I think. Mr. Thompson, thank you. That took me a little by surprise that we weren't doing municipal consent, and I thought we were. But to have something formalized and memorialized in your minutes would really be appreciated. Thank you for that.
Councilor Lehman?
I'm a little bit confused about the cost participation portion of it. The costs are set out in their, in the county's policy.
Mr. Mayor, that's true, but the cooperative construction agreement addresses more than just cost participation. There's other, there's other issues that are addressed in that. It hasn't been drafted yet. So I think just giving direction to staff to prepare that and return to it with you along with approving the layout would be.
Councilor Whiting, you ready for my motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I kind of combined two there. I combined the subject line with the policy line, so.
I'll see if I can, I can get it here. But I would make a motion to authorize staff to prepare a cooperative construction agreement for CASA 42 expansion project with the general layout of cost participation for CASA 42 expansion and, or not the, for County Road 42 between 17, CASA 17 and CASA 83.
Councilor Lehman?
Second.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Further discussion?
Mayor, I just want to be clear that I'm on board with what I've seen tonight. The only other issue is the 10-foot trail, and the city's going to pick up the difference. I don't see that the county would have a problem with that.
Okay. More discussion? More discussion? Actually, good discussion, and thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead then to 11A, we have the city bill list in front of us for your review. No action needed. 11B liaison report. Councilor Brennan?
I have nothing.
Councilor Lehman?
Utility last night. Mount Olive Water Main is completed. They did manage to get all the flushing done of all our hydrants and exercised 400 of their fire hydrant valves. That's a lot. Some of them were fixed. I watched them fix one downtown that was, they're way down in the ground. I didn't realize how deep they were. Windermere Water is done. There was one power outage on November 27th, 44 customers, 90 minutes. There was an overload on the line, and they checked all the lines and couldn't find nothing wrong and reset it. And so something did it. They don't know what it was, though. Either the two lines touched each other, or the branch, or somebody was in their garage plugging something in the wrong socket or something, I don't know. They adopted their budget and their capital improvement plans. I have them in the car. I'm sure staff will get a copy here shortly. And if they don't, I can give you mine. The other thing that they discussed and are moving forward with is, and I'm going to read this so I get it correct. Summary of their municipal contribution from Spuck to the city of Shakopee. The current municipal transfer calculation for Shakopee Public Utilities to the city of Shakopee uses a percentage of defined sales of 2.71% for electric and 23.77% for water at an annual amount of approximately $2,316,000, plus an in-kind of $85,000 for free electrical service for street lighting, for a total projected municipal contribution of $2,400,000. It's actually 401, but I'm just rounding. As of January 1st, 2020, they're, we're going to revise this calculation in their policy to define sales and use 4.4% for both the electric and water utility, which would result in a similar annual municipal transfer amount of approximately 2.311 million, plus 85,000 for the free in-kind service for street lighting, a total of $2,397,000 for 2020. Based on a proposed 2020 budget, the 2020 transfer amount would be approximately 2.4 million, contingent upon actual sales, of course, and an additional estimated 85. The rationale for the change was the 23.77% of water was really bringing the water fund down substantially. So to balance it out, instead of having it all hit on one side, they're going to, that's what they proposed, and that's, that's what they're adopting, so.
Question, so the payment, they're saying, how do they phrase their payment to the city?
The.
Transfer.
The transfer from the utility to the.
It's always been called a payment in lieu of taxes.
Right.
Because the utility doesn't pay taxes.
Right.
So this is how they.
And, and the, it's, the end outcome is the same, you know.
Mr. Reynolds?
I believe those were established by a joint effort between both Spuck and the city council. And as such, would require city council approval on those as well.
Think that.
Don't know.
I think that formula has been changed very frequently, but I do recall that it was changed maybe 10 or 12 years ago. And, and I do believe it took action by the council, but we would check into that. More?
I think that was it.
All right. I do not, thank you very much. I do not have a formal liaison report. However, I do want to bring up that Friday night is our holiday fest this Friday. I think it starts at 6:00, but get there early downtown Shakopee. Tree lighting, parade, fireworks. Santa's going to make an appearance. It should be a great time. On December 12th, a great opportunity for our seniors at the Jolly Jubilee at the community center. That starts at 12:30. There will be a holiday fest for kids, December 13th at 6:00 PM. And Santa's coming and you're going to go skating at our ice rink. And that is on December 15th at 2:15. Skate with Santa. And, and those are just a couple of great, a lot of events coming up here for the, for family enjoyment. So that's what I had.
Wow, Santa.
Huh?
Santa.
Well, 'tis the season.
Yeah, yeah. I have no liaison reports, but I did want to mention the holiday parade Friday night. And that, the parade starts at 6 o'clock. But there's, there's going to be a tree lighting, I think, later. And then festivities going on for kids and everybody. So get down there early, stay long and have fun.
Counselor Contras?
Thank you. I have no liaison report.
You're very kind. Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, our administrative report.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Just let's enjoy Friday night. I know that a lot of us will be out there for the festivities and looking forward to seeing Santa.
Santa's coming to that one too?
Thank you, everybody. Item number 12, is there any other business before this board? Seeing none? Counselor Brennan?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 at 7:00 PM.
I have a motion in a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:10.